City of Fairhope, City Council Work Session to Order, Monday, January the 8th, 2024. I hope everybody's doing well. Happy New Year if I hadn't seen you. Our first on our agenda today as far as the work session is discussion of an ADECA Energy Efficient retrofit grant by Nicole Love is what I see here. Ms. Love?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everyone. So we just wanted to kind of, can you hear me? Okay. There, right now, ADECA has two different grant opportunities out there for energy efficient retrofits. They're not very big. There's one specific for wastewater. So anything that would apply to any of our wastewater treatment plants would go through that one, and the max on that is 25K. So Darrell and I had been talking. Darrell would like to replace some of the lighting at the wastewater treatment plant with LED lights, which will save us some money on our energy bill. Do you have anything on those, Darrell? Anything specific?
No, we just, whatever is incandescent and fluorescent, we'll be able to replace and upgrade.
And then the second one on there is, or for that, for the ADECA, is just a general retrofit. So because we are going to be redoing the Diaz house into a nature center, I talked to Rebecca Bryant, and we would like to submit to that one for an energy efficient HVAC system, and also installing new LED lights, getting rid of the incandescent lights that are inside of the house already, which according to Art Diaz, he said that the energy bills killed him in that house. So if we're able to, number one, replace the envelope, which, you know, that's all part of the redo of the house, and then we get an energy efficient HVAC system in, and then some energy efficient lighting, it'll be really great. And that one, we will apply for, the max is about 40K, so we'll apply for, as, we'll kind of back into that number to get as much benefit as we can. Just trying to offset some of our costs for the Diaz house, and making sure that we're doing, you know, everything we can for energy efficiency, and green building, and all of that. Any questions?
Are these grants one per project, or one grant for a number of projects?
So there are a number of projects that can be, for the wastewater one, they're only going to award two $25,000 grants. But, you know, you never know.
So maybe it'll be per project. I was just wondering.
Yes. Yeah, it's 25, so it'd be 25K for us. We'd be applying for 25K for the wastewater, and then 40,000 for the general one.
Okay. What's the match?
No match, sorry. Yes, I should have led with that. I feel like that's the biggest thing to lead to. We have no match for these.
So they have $450,000 available. Okay, maximum, I see, minimum of 10,000, maximum of 40,000, so we're gonna s-
We're gonna try to max it out.
With the 40,000?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Have no problem with that. 100%, that's a no-brainer. Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, very good. Anything else?
Yes, while I'm here, I have number 11 that I can-
Oh, okay.
Mention real quick, if you don't mind. I know we're not, we're not doing updates technically, but-
Well, we'll wait on that. Let us go through the agenda, and then we'll get to that. Thank you.
Sounds great.
Yeah. All right, guys. Well, thank you, Nicole, Mayor Richard, everybody. We have committee updates. There may not be much consensus at the beginning of the, of the month. Anybody, council?
We do, the airport authority does have a nomination from the mayor on tonight's agenda. I think that's item-
It's the last one, I believe, or close to the last one.
17, yeah, next to the last one. So, yeah, the airport authority does recommend approval of the mayor's nomination for the airport authority.
Yeah, Dr. Strickland. Yeah, very nice man. All right. Is that it, Councilman Brer?
That was it.
Councilman Congress, anything?
I do not have any updates at this time.
Councilman Robinson?
Yeah, just that the historic preservation committee meets Wednesday at 9:30.
And I think we've made some movement on the redo, I guess. They should be sending that out. I think Lisa's gonna send that out to us.
And I think that's gonna be on the agenda for, work session agenda for the next meeting, is that right?
Yeah. Just a work session, I believe, to discuss. Yeah, okay. All right, very good. Councilman Boone, anything?
No updates at this time.
All right, and I do not have any updates as far as committees. All my meetings are coming up this week. All right, all right, department heads, all right. Updates, department heads, let's get to it, agenda.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
So just a quick update on what's going on in our department before I tackle my two resolutions. We have 14 jobs which are currently posted, where we're accepting applications. We have seven which are in the review and interview step of the process. We have three positions which are currently in the background step, meaning we've gotten a contingent offer out for them. And to date, orientation, we had five new employees start. Some other HR projects we have going on, the handbook will go before the personnel board on January 18th. So looking forward to getting some feedback on that. Throughout the end of November and December, we entered probably more than 300 pay increases as part of the city's annual merit increase, which was budgeted for the fiscal year. So that was a huge undertaking, took about two weeks in total. Let's see, last week, we started the implementation process for outsourcing the family medical leave administration. And then this week, we also started the implementation for NeoGov, which is the new applicant tracking system. And then some end of the year numbers for the city's safety program. We ended the year with 64% fewer reported claims than the prior year, as well as a 65% reduction in claims paid out from 2022 to 2023. In the last six months, we recertified 91 employees in CPR. Over the course of the year, we trained 31 employees, or sent them to classes to obtain their CDL classes A and B. And based on the numbers, we're looking forward to receiving the Gold Risk Management Award for the third year in a row. And then another note, in September, the city moved to using Urgent Care of Fairhope for all of our post-accident drug screening and post-accident medical needs. And today, we found out that they have offered a decrease in our drug test rates. So they're decreasing our post-accident drug test rates to $50 per test, so we're looking forward to saving some money on that.
Let me ask, did you say vaccines there? Did you say something about vaccines?
I did not.
Okay. Yeah, we can go to the symbol clinic and get our vaccines, right?
Yes.
I'm trying to multitask, so I want to make sure I was going to the right place.
Sure. Any other questions for our resolutions? Okay. I've got number eight and nine. Number eight, that the council approves the selection of Hope Hicks with Ball, Ball, Matthews, and Novak for legal services for HR and labor and employment advice.
All right. This is a new firm that we're hiring on, is that correct?
No, we're renewing or extending.
They're not, she's not new. We, she's not new. We've been using Hope, and she does a great job for us. She's actually reviewed the handbook, and we're able to consult her at any time. She's very cost-effective for us and does just a really great job.
Oh, okay. So we just had to reengage, I'm just learning myself, we just had to reengage for technicalities?
We also, in case there's any kind of conflict, we also have, Hand Aaron Dahl has an HR attorney, and we can also use that as a backup if we need to, but Hope's done a great job so far.
Okay, all right, yeah. Yeah, I like when she said that, "I'm only going to invoice you when you use me." I was like, well, do they invoice people when they don't use them?
Yeah, Jay, do they all do that?
I was like, yeah, Jay, you're very quiet, sir.
I don't look out, I call the retainer.
Marcus, you're very quiet. Yeah, these doggone lawyers, I tell you. Son, be a lawyer. Anyway, all right, Ms. Hannah, number nine, what do you have? That's great.
Yes, so for number nine, to reclassify or correctly classify a vacant position, it was titled in the budget mechanic clerk, but it's actually a mechanic, so we're just correcting what was submitted as part of documentation. There's no change to the payroll budget for that department.
Okay, did the particular personnel find that offensive?
It was a vacant position, so no.
Okay, good. All right, you're not a clerk, all right? A mechanic, all right, I got it. All right, very good, very good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right. All right. My other brother Darrell?
Good evening. I've got number 14. This is a one-year contract extension for WR Mitchell for On Call contractor.
Okay, yeah. This is strictly for On Call, correct?
Correct.
Now, do they do, when you're short of men, I think Marcus and I had this conversation shortly, but what does this look like? If you're short of men, do they come out as well? Is that considered On Call?
So it's, it's for jobs that we're not equipped to do. So if we have to go, you know, 10, 12 feet in the ground, we don't have the equipment to go that deep to do it safely. So we would contract them out. If we don't have the resources, if we're tied up and we're doing many, many things, and we have an emergency we can't get to, we would call them, they would come out, and they would do it for us.
Okay, all right, very good. Yeah. I saw, can you, there was a number in there that I was not quite understanding. It was 350,000.
350,000, correct.
What is that number? Like, is that how much we're paying that particular entity?
Well, it's a, it's a bank account, and they would subtract from that as it's been used throughout, as we use their services.
Okay.
It's a non-truce.
Yeah.
That's what it is. Because it just, it did not say anything other to explain that number.
Right.
And so it was pretty much an empty number, and I don't really like empty numbers.
Sure.
Yeah, thanks, thanks Darrell. Okay, very good. All right.
Any more questions?
Counsel, anything else?
I just, well, I'm trying to get used to this new package system, and I'm trying to find, you know, the breakdown. Do they, are the costs somewhere in here, and I'm not seeing them, other than the 350?
That's why I was, no, there's really not a whole lot of information on the cost, that's why I was kind of asking.
I think that's because it's an extension, and we've done it, and they're willing to hold the, they're willing to hold the prices.
There's so much, there are labor categories, so much an hour, right?
Correct.
You basically find so many hours of, well, you just have a number, and depending on what type of labor category is charged, and they just bill off of that.
Correct.
350, right? And a lot of times, we'll have those labor categories listed in the dollar. I just, as the council president said, I didn't know if I, we missed it enough.
And I think because it is an extension, it just isn't in there. They're, they're holding the prices again for another year. That's right, prices are the same.
Prices are the same, that's the correct.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
You want us to go back and check the record?
Unless we get some deflation going on.
Deflation, is that a word?
Don't mean anything.
Right. All right, okay. Anything else, counsel?
I just wanted to use that word.
All right, thanks Darrell.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Number five?
We do have number five and six for the planning department. And if you want to go through, this is a PUD request, it's a little unique, relatively simple. If you won't go ahead and kind of take a look at it now since we have time.
Yes, please, yeah, you know.
There might be something later we want to get out for, so.
Time constraint.
Roll over rings. So this is a little unique PUD, it's Tin Tops at Gayfer Road. This came, this is a project that came through the Planning Commission, and I'm gonna go ahead and show you the location here. It came through the Planning Commission when it was unzoned and within the county. It received a subdivision approval, they've started, begun construction. So there was, in this area, that's the layout, it is 10 duplex buildings. They've, that area has since received zoning, and the owner's Ron Creel, he came to us and talking about, "Well, I'm gonna build these the same, I'm not changing anything, not asking to change anything. I may want to condo them down the road instead of renting each of them and actually be able to sell each unit." That prompted some conversations between the county and the city, of which would be the easier process. So in essence, what this PUD is, is kind of memorializing this plan. It is a little unique. In that area, we would not support zoning to this type of development any longer, nor, neither us nor the county. But, but this has approval, so how do we put a zoning in, on top of this that would allow it to move forward legally, but not grow or, or do anything else without coming back to us? So we're, we recommended a PUD, he submitted everything, we don't have any real concerns with it. It'll be locked in as a PUD, as we're proposing with this site plan. And we're also saying this does not generate development trends for this area, now that there is zoning in that area, and, and we have other projects that have come to us and the county in this area, kind of this dense development. So if there's any questions on this, we really don't have too much. They've, they've kind of got to the point, in the, we didn't look at in the subdivision, but now there's even building permits for each of the buildings, layouts, there's the landscape plan, and these were approved in 2019 for the subdivision case. So just to let you know how far along those things have, have been done.
It's actually been reduced to 10, it was 20.
It's still 10 buildings, 20 units. So there are 10 duplex buildings, 20 units, so it went, it was a, and got approval for each of those, those 20 units, 10 buildings. There's no change from the, what was approved. It already had building permits before we received this application for a PUD and zoning amendment. So this would at least bring it into the city, it's there, all the property taxes go along with it. They may in the future go back to, if they want to condo, that would require a condominium plat, that would have to get approved through the Planning Commission to set up the condo docks. That may happen. Where we, we did not dictate that in this PUD, it's more about the physical look of it. If they choose to change the way of ownership, they'll have to go through that process of the condominium plat.
Wondered if they met the green space requirement by 1/100 of an acre?
They did. And I wasn't in the review of this one?
Really?
Yeah. That was, that was meeting the, the threshold of the 20%.
They moved some line, like about two inches somewhere?
There is, you know, you can see kind of a dash line in the front, and if you drive by, there is a wetland around the front of the property, so that was being preserved, cannot be counted as green space. So there is a little bit more than-
So a little buffer there, okay.
Yeah. So there, there is a, a little bit more than you'd typically have. There wasn't enough to count the wetland area as green space. I think you need, forgive me if I'm misremembering this, I believe there's a minimum of three acres for something like a wetland to be counted as green space, as a preserve. So there's a little additional open space, if you will, not green space.
I guess for just aesthetics, I mean, I know the answer, why they wanted to put more in there, but why did we approve the one building in the middle of the, of the development? It's a-
Yeah, I mean, as, as a unzoned-
It's where all the profit is, right there, there's a margin.
That's, you know, that, that's one of those things with the subdivision regulations, did they meet it? And exceed it in some places, you know, there's being unzoned, and, and what they looked at at the time, I'm gonna assume they met everything, and, you know, maybe suggested remove units, but you know how that goes if you're meeting.
But it's a PUD, this is a different situation.
Well, they already have the building permits, is the way we looked at it. They have building, I mean, this, this was approved in 2019.
It's already been approved, right.
Everything has permits before we even saw the PUD application.
But it's just so that they can have the ability to condo and sell individual units.
For legalities.
Otherwise, they got the permits, and they can build-
And candidly, I think the county and us, we were, we were all very open about the process. I think with the, the new zoning and everything, the, nobody could stop it from being built. But, but as they move forward, they would have had to have a rezoning through the county, that probably would have been quicker, but maybe a little more darts thrown at them, because nobody at the county had seen this project.
But I see, so it is a, it is a PUD-
With annexation.
With annexation.
Yes, yeah.
With annexation.
This is a conditional annexation, so if denied, they would not annex in, so it's tied to the zoning. So.
Yeah. So they'll have private garbage?
They are-
That stood out to me. I don't know.
They are.
They're annexing in, but then they'll have private garbage, is that, okay?
Yeah. Yeah, and denser like that, you know, it's, it is typical to maybe provide, they'll have a private garbage.
That's what I'm, I don't know how that works.
They still pay garbage fees.
Okay.
It is. It's just sometimes easier and cleaner to keep, they already had that planned, so.
Gotcha.
If they want to seek an alternate plan, they can certainly propose that, but it, it's in their PUD that it will be private garbage, and they have a dumpster with enclosures as we require.
All right, so we'll have the hearing and introduce it, and let it sit over and go from there. Thanks, hon.
And then number six is the, the GIS software. I believe I spoke at, the work session, not the last meeting, but the one before that, we talked about in the work session. So this is a three-year contract for GIS licensing to replace what we're currently using. So that, that number would be split three, divided by three for each year of the contract. Can't remember exact, 27,000 approximately. It is budgeted, we do have that earmarked. This is actually saving us some money. We're, when you collectively look at all the things we're doing with GIS, this should save us a little money, or at least provide us more options with approximately the same amount of money.
All right.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Number seven is pretty straightforward. Yeah, all right. Richard, all right.
Good evening. Before I go over my agenda items, I do want to cover one thing. The city clerk gave you a little quick report. As you know, a few years back, we, the state legislator passed the Rebuild Alabama Act, which included a special one-cent gas tax that we get. And as you recall, the last two August, we had to approve a transportation plan that listed roads that were subject for resurfacing, that that money could be spent on. And this is the first January that this requirement is in place, since these were funds that were generated in '22, spent in '23. And per the Code of Alabama, I have to make a report to you on the first meeting of January, telling you where those funds were spent. So if you'll look at that, we, approximately, and this number's a little bit erroneous, because I'd have to go back and look at the exact number in the budget, but approximately $160,000 was generated by the Rebuild Alabama Act fund that was expendable in the fiscal year '23. And those funds were applied and consumed in the FY '23 citywide resurfacing and striping project, more specifically on the following city-maintained roadways as identified in the City of Fairhope's approved annual transportation plan. This would have been the one that you would have approved in August of '22. We resurfaced Haver Lane, which is a cul-de-sac, approximately 170 linear feet. Windmill Road from Thompson Hall to State Route 181, approximately 2,565 linear feet. River Oaks Drive from Booth Road to Oakwood Avenue, approximately 1,195 linear feet. Oakwood Avenue, Sagefoot, Sagebrush Loop, and Driftwood Avenue, approximately 4,548 linear feet. Seacliff Drive from the end of Baldwin County Maintenance to the Southern Terminus, approximately 2,217 linear feet. Bayou Drive from North Section Street to Fairwood Boulevard, approximately 1,540 linear feet. Quell Creek Drive from State Route 181 to the neighborhood entrance, which is just east of the clubhouse. And East Belangee Avenue, which is a dead-end street, that's the, the east side of Belangee, approximately 350 linear feet. One road that was on the approved list that you have funded is White Avenue from Section Street to South Mobile Street. But as you know, we have a gas, cast iron gas replacement project that we were hoping to work very closely with. They are finished on White, the contractor's been very generous to, to demobilize and come back and finish White, which he's expecting to be back on, on that project, possibly as early as next week. So I couldn't report that we've spent that money, because we haven't spent that money yet, but that would also show up, because that allocation was, was approved in fiscal year '23. As you notice, that number spent so far is bigger than the money coming in, but I will remind you that our normal resurfacing, in addition to the Rebuild Alabama Act funds, come from the other gas tax we get, the four and seven cents, as well as qualifying impact fees, and sometimes general fund dollars, such as the resurfacing of City Hall's parking lot, and the Pecan Building's parking lot as well. And again, Lisa will enter this report into the minutes of this meeting, so we meet the state requirement, as well as make it available to any, any person that would like to see it. If you have any questions about this report, I will be glad to, to answer them. And I will tell you, Lisa and I had a little guided discovery on this. We determined at 3:04, we needed to do this. So this was pretty quick. I've already put it on the calendar for December of this year, so that it can be officially in the, on the agenda and, and be given to you in a more formal manner. But every little bit of paving dollars helps. And the good news is that fund will continue to hopefully grow as, as more gas stations and population grows, and the purchase of gasoline produces more tax. On the agenda tonight, I can address item number 10, which is a request to y'all for an additional appropriation of a million dollars directed toward the Flying Creek Nature Preserve, with the objective of accomplishing all of that that was shown to you, and I think gained a lot of excitement on the master planning. As, as you know, we have the million dollars from GOMESA that will accomplish those key items that were addressed in that grant, but the, the planning process and what y'all participated in showed a whole lot additional, and I think there's, there's interested in pursuing that. As well as Nicole continues to work on a grant for some additional funding that is a 50/50. So hopefully, maybe we'll report back that we only need half of this money as we get into that, and hear back from that Fish and Wildlife Opportunity Grant there. Also, number 12 is just our, every two years, we have to go through a bridge inspection. It's a budgeted item, and we are requesting that you approve the selection of SafeSpan LLC. They have done the bridge inspection the last two cycles, if not three. And it's kind of interesting, we've added a bridge, and they kept the price the same as, as two years ago. So I consider that to be a, a nice, a nice thing for a change. And that is, we had $15,000 budgeted for that, and the not-to-exceed fee is $10,500. And then number 13, as you know, we have awarded the contract for Southland Place sidewalks. And unlike, kind of like Tin Tops, this one actually goes back to 2018, so it's been around a while. And the problem with the, the professional service contract is that it, it really kind of dated itself out from the design to the CNI. So we're, we're asking for approval for the selection of professional engineering services to, for the Southland project for construction engineering inspection, for Neil Schaefer, who did all the design work and has done all the lead work at this point. And we'll come back to you in two weeks with the not-to-exceed amount. And I will remind you that 1.5 million was budgeted for this. The contract for the actual construction is a little over a million dollars. And with a reasonable amount on the CNI, we'll still be significantly under, under budget on this, when you see that number, hopefully in two weeks. Be glad to answer any questions.
Counsel, I didn't know we had seven bridges.
We have, yep. We used to have six, we have seven now, so.
I was trying to think about, where are seven bridges in Fairhope?
And, and some of us misnumbered. This is just a little nerd fact, if you want to hear it. When, when you have a series of box culverts, that when they're set side by side, expand more than 20 feet, that is now classified as a bridge. So for example, example on Twin Beach, there at Fairfield, where that Cowpen Creek cross under, that's a triple box culvert, but, but the three of them added together is 24 feet, they're eight-foot box culverts.
So that's a bridge?
That's a bridge, so it has to be inspected. So, so we have traditional bridges, and then we have a couple that are just a, a complex of box culverts, so.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Richard. Yeah, I knew I couldn't count seven bridges.
Elevator maintenance.
Yeah, remember, we were trying to say, who can count seven bridges? Boone should be, he's born, raised, everything. Seven bridges? I was like, where?
I consider it just any of those.
It's that road, it's that road south of town. Yeah, right.
Watercrosses a bridge, no matter what you use to do it.
Right. Very interesting. Yes, sir.
Good evening. We have item number 16 on the agenda, pertaining to the, the fuel pump at the marina. And Mark Reed is here to speak on any particulars, but this is an unbudgeted expense, an emergency request to fix a leaking pump on our fuel dock.
All right. Mark, yeah, tell us a little bit what we got going on.
So I'm gonna throw Mark into the bonfire.
Yeah, we'll be nice.
So basically, what we have going on is, the fuel pump, we noticed that, just recently, that it's continually leaking, and it's only exacerbated by-
and it's only exacerbated by heat or especially exacerbated by heat. So every time that we're getting a hot day, more fuel is continually coming out of it. We've had the service folks over there multiple times. There are parts on it that they cannot fix, so that's why we're at this situation right now.
Okay.
I've got a question on that. And I don't know how badly it's leaking or how serious it is, but that almost seems like something that would be
insurance.
addressed in some capacity, not having to be held up and wait till a council meeting. I mean, it it sounds like an environmental issue, but I don't know.
It's not that serious right now. The longer, the longer we wait, considering the heat.
Like a little drill or something?
Considering that the heat is what really causes it to happen as we go towards the on-season, it's going to continue to get worse.
But I'm assuming since we're talking about this, we're containing any of that leak?
We are containing it. That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
We're not polluting them.
No, not polluting at all.
Yeah, yeah. No smoking.
No smoking.
Just a hint. No. So, Mark, is there going to be some type of, when we bind this new particular hose, does it have a warranty on it or do we, does the old one have warranties or how does that?
The old one doesn't have a warranty. It's an old Bennett, so they can't even find parts for it anymore.
Yeah, all right. But this one will come with some type of maintenance or warranty or something?
It will come with maintenance and I'll have to look into the warranty. I can't answer that for certain. But I would assume since it's brand-new, it would. But I'll find that out for you.
Yeah, no worries. Okay. All right, very good. Any other questions, counsel?
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My head's thinking on the agenda tonight, I was just going to give a few updates.
You just want to talk to us?
That's all. I just want to talk to y'all. We met with the UTEC that's doing the underground Magnolia Project today. They were going to start mobilizing this week, but we're probably going to push it back till next Monday. We've got severe weather coming in, so I think we've got more coming in Friday, too. So I felt like we just must push it back, so we don't really want to start opening up any holes in downtown Fairhope right now.
This is involving, what were we talking about here?
So this is the underground from Van Croft on Magnolia all the way to church.
Oh.
That were, today was our start date.
Okay, got you. All right, I missed that part.
We're going to push it back to Monday.
Okay.
But they're, I think they're going to start still mobilizing some equipment later in the week. Pickleball courts, Quill Creek started going up, so hopefully by the end of next week, we'll have those going. EV charger, the fast chargers, they're up and going. John's been helping us out. He's the EV guru. So he he put y'all some numbers together. He's going to come up here. He's, he enjoys doing it, so.
Oh, John.
Does a great job doing it.
Oh, he, I'm like, who is John? John's coming off the stage. Yeah, I'm John.
Yeah, I've been back there the whole time.
I didn't know, John. You've been hiding out, dude.
Well, he's referenced me a few times. I've just been back there like, hey.
Very good.
But yeah, so, you know, we've kept track of the numbers and, you know, got a fresh report this morning. Usage is up 24%. That's year-over-year. That's individual sessions. Revenue is up 43% year-over-year, so getting a lot of good usage. I, you know.
Is this for which?
That's for everything. So, yeah, yeah. So that's including the new ones, the new ones. Even though they're just installed, already have 54 uses.
At plantation?
Yes, and almost $400 in revenue already, and we've, we really haven't even advertised them as open. So people are seeing them and knowing what it is and going after it, yeah.
But they can't find the parking garage. Right, it's crazy.
They're listed on their app, like, though.
Oh, they have an app?
They're on the app, so people can see where they're at.
We have a parking garage app.
So what's the average, how long does it take for somebody to charge up a vehicle?
30 minutes?
What does it cost them?
So so these smaller units are level-two units that are here and at the parking garage. Those are hours, you know, be two, three, four hours. The ones at plantation point aim to be less than 30 minutes.
Yeah.
You know, you would stop, get something to eat, get in and out.
30 minutes. That's what I read.
Very good, yeah.
That's pretty cool. It's really cool. Are we looking to add more of these around the city or as we, no, okay.
Not yet.
Okay.
I mean, not until we have, and how many, total do we have? Four?
So three stations here, two stations in the garage and two at plantation, right?
Okay.
And two other superchargers, the other ones.
Yeah.
Now, do we have one still down in parking garage?
We do. Yes.
We had cement structure out at Quill Creek in case we wanted to add level-dudes out there, so we went ahead and planned for that.
They may each do ten.
What's the question, Jim?
Yes.
We have three chargers. Was that six stations?
Each one of these can do two at a time. The ones at plantation point can only do one at a time.
Okay. So the ones in the parking garage do two at a time?
Yes.
So that's actually six.
One of those is is down, like the mayor said. The parts just came in and we're going to get those, get it back up soon. But parts just came in. They're hard to get, just like everything else.
And they're using these out here as well. Yeah. Very good. That's good stuff, man. Love to hear.
Glad to take an interest in that and let us know.
Thank you. Yeah, I love it. Yeah.
Do you have an electric vehicle?
I do, yeah.
Oh.
I got one, too. Kevin's got one.
Not what he's talking about. Mine won't plug in any of those units.
Your golf park is electric. Yeah, that's right. It is. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just different plug-in.
Yeah, different plug-in, yeah. Mm-hmm. Very good.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate you. All right.
Thank you, Ben, too.
Yes, yes, yes. And Ben, yes. Yeah. All right. So item number 11, I think, oh, we have here, what is this one?
Exotic plants.
Yeah, that's exotic plants. Who has that one? Jamie's not here? That's Nicole?
Yeah, I've got, I've got one.
What you got, chief?
I've got item number 15, which is the procurement for four 2024 Chevrolet Tahos for the police department.
Yeah.
Y'all have any questions?
No. We got them all, right? They all ordered?
No, not yet.
Not yet. We're still having a.
We have to wait for you to approve it.
Yeah, okay. Well, what I mean is the company, we were having a problem finding them.
That is correct.
Okay, so we found the people. Okay, good. All right, that's my question. Yeah, I knew it was a problem. All right. Very good.
This is just acquire the vehicles, then you've got to outfit them separately.
That is correct. Yeah, we have to outfit them after we get them.
What is that per unit about?
The, so the actual cost for the Tahoe, by the time we put all the equipment in, is about $82,942.
So we still be under budget?
Now, we're going to be about $15,000 over budget, but the good thing is when we did our budget this year, some of the equipment that we had already ordered was rolled over. So we've got an extra $90,000 in our capital purchases that we're going to request to use the extra funds to purchase that.
So all of them will be equipped all at the same time ever? Does that ever happen?
It does. It does. They'll all come in at the same time. Usually, they all, they always come in at the same time and they'll be fully equipped.
What'd you say, about $82,000?
Plus another 10 or 9?
Yeah, $82,942 after the vehicle. That's the vehicle, the equipment, and then after we put the radio and all the other equipment that is needed.
So the Tahos, $48,000, the optional equipment's $2,000, that's 50, and then the lighting's 50, so that's $50,500 in there. So there's $32,000 worth of additional equipment that goes in each one?
It's about a little over $18,000 just for the lighting package.
So the answer is yes, plus $32,000 additional?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's correct. Some expensive cars. Very good. All right.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right.
Better walk up again for nothing.
I know.
Oh, well.
I was like, darn, I have to get up again. It's all, it's all Councilman Martin's fault.
Yeah, I'll take it. I'm sorry.
Okay, number 11 is the, if you remember, we got a grant from the Gulf Coast RC&amp;D to redo the butterfly slash pollinator garden that is on the bluff next to the Legion out there. And we looked for different services. We already knew of Gina Todia with Wetland Resources Environmental Consulting. She's done this for us before. She's done this a lot all over the place, so she's really, really well-qualified and has a really great crew. Jamie was going to do it himself, but decided we just need to go in there, have somebody go in and professionally do it. So we're just asking for, to execute the contract with Wetland Resources Environmental Consulting. The total is $6,680. That was their their invoice amount. This is all grant-funded. We're paying for this solely through the grant because we only got $6,900. So we're paying for this entirely out of the grant. Not yet.
Say that again, mayor?
Not yet.
I didn't hear that.
There is a sign out there already. There's a kiosk, a large kiosk out there that we have already talked to the Point Clear because it's the Point Clear Rotary that had done that way back in the day. So we're going to have them just, they've agreed to go through and update it with some of the natives that that we're going to see. And I think there are a couple of actually invasive species that they listed on there, but, so they'll remove those and then just update it with all the natives.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you. Jack talked about number 17. Doctor being appointed. All right, what's number 18 here? And mayor, you going to talk about our page, number 18? With the street closure? I think this is, I think the time just ran out from what I understand.
Yes, if y'all remember, back in 2023, we gave Todd Seeley and the Merchants on Fairhope Avenue about a three-to-four-month window for them to kind of test out the art walk with the Fairhope Avenue street closure. Well, we've kind of polled everybody and Todd, I believe, is going to be here tonight. We've encouraged the Merchants on Fairhope Avenue, if they've got opinions either way, to be here tonight. But we think the large majority is for the closure, so we're here tonight to kind of make it official again. I think they were under the understanding that it was just like open-ended for the rest of eternity. So we did kind of have to let them know that you are going to have to request that for the city council for 2024. So they were unaware, so I thought we had made that clear to them. But anyhow, they're going to come back tonight requesting, of course, we have had January, but February to November, because of course December, we have the Christmas parade. So I believe they're going to ask for all of those months in 2024 to do that, again, to do that closure for Fairhope Avenue.
Do they follow through on getting the list, like was, that was suggested to make sure that we're speaking for everybody and not just a few?
We, mayor and I both were in contact with Todd Seeley and let him know he was to go around and get signatures from all the fellow neighbors on Fairhope Avenue. And I think there are some that may be indifferent or if they're, if they do feel passionate about not closing it, I don't think they were going to actively sign against it. I mean, we did have some that were like, I mean, I could take it or leave it, but I don't think that they were, you know. Correct. So.
Do we have a resolution anywhere to look at?
The previous one we created?
Okay. It's not in our package.
It's not in our, it's not in our packet.
I just wanted to see if there was any language that we might want to tweak in the resolution because I would suggest, do we want to make it for a year now? Do we want to make it open-ended until further notice?
I'd say open-ended until we decide to rescind it.
Delamar.
We might want to tweak it and make it, as Councilman Conyers suggests, leave it open-ended this time and then we take the action to end it if we ever need to.
Right.
I think we decided that the last time.
Yeah, let me say this. The only, I guess the only problem I would see with leaving it open-ended, subject to change, is that I think they are going out and booking bans or whatever else, you know, eight, nine months out. And so if you were to say it's open-ended and then to come back in six months and say, ah, we've gotten some word, we don't like it, we're going to shut it down, and they've already booked something out of here.
But if you approve it for a year at a time and they book something now, we could have the same problem.
Well, but 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 at least if you book it, if you only approve it through November of this year and they book something for January of next year, that's on them because they didn't have approval for that. But if you do it open-ended, you got to plan some of this stuff out. And if you, it's hard to pull the rug out from under them if it's open-ended. I'd, I'd be in favor of more doing it how we've got it laid out now, which is a set time now through November. It's easy to come back.
Even then, if you decide to kill it in November and the people that have a ban booked, it's, it's.
That's up to them, though. That's, that's, that's on their own.
I think they, that's a risk. They take it anytime.
I will say, we do have the Delamar closure. I think it is indefinite until there's a resolution stating otherwise. I will say with Fairhope Avenue, I mean, I would be hesitant just because it's the main artery of town.
To not be able to control it.
So you you may want to, I mean, we could, we could give it another year. I mean, we gave them six, I think, three to six months this time. So if we give them another year and kind of take that year and see how it goes again. We just have a lot of new business owners and I think that they're, you know, excited to kind of create a buzz on Fairhope Avenue.
I, I, you know, I think we can meet in the middle. I think they just have to come back to us every time. I'm sorry. Because it's such a main artery. It's okay, this didn't hurt them at all to come back here and say, hey, can we do it again for another year? And we make a decision. That way, we're staying legal, right, Jay? And we can make a decision on point if we if we kind of, you know.
Paige said, you know, you do get a lot of, you know, some business turnover. And while there might not be anybody right now that's upset enough about it to come here to the meeting, maybe next January you do. And, you know, if you have four or five that are strongly opposed, if they have to redo it every year, it may be worth just listening to it again.
That's what I, that's, that's my suggestion.
They did think it was open-ended because they've already booked through November.
Yeah, so I think it's, I think it's important for them to know it's not open-ended and it is subject to, you know, it is only certainly if this passes through November, if you book anything else past that.
You would have to come back.
Well, and just for planning.
If they, if we gave them a year at a time and they've already got everything booked through November and we found out they were having problems, we could, we always say, whatever we, whatever we do, we can undo.
Yeah, well, right. Well, well, I would think that language is in there. I think if you not, and Marcus, you can help with this, if we not put language in there saying that we have anything detrimental or to the detriment of the welfare, which is our police powers, to the welfare of the ultimate majority of citizens, that we can cancel that at any time without any kickback as far as legalities. Can we not put that language in there? Yeah, I mean, I think that's a.
I think it's the same thing. We could end it at any time. And when they sign a contract with a ban, they need to say, hey, if the city councils this, we get a refund.
Well, and I'm just sitting here thinking sort of on the other side of it. I mean, if you do it year to year and they got to come back in January to get it re-approved, then they, how can they book anybody?
Past it. That's what I'm saying. Past it year to year. That's my point.
And one thing.
You're making my argument, Jenny, my argument, Cora.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, I see it.
Year to year, though.
I see it from both sides. I just, you know.
It takes a lawyer a little bit to catch all these arguments.
Yeah, I think it should, I think they should have to. All right, all right. I think they should have to come back to us every time, so in my opinion.
He's changed his mind now, Cora.
Oh.
Yeah, you're at three to one now, Cora.
I'm making the point that it's hard for them to book anything if they have, if they have to come back in January, but.
Yeah, they're going to book for this month if they.
Yeah, but they don't, but they don't, yeah, but they don't have approval for it and they don't get, they wouldn't get approval.
Yeah, they didn't book January of this year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes, that seems, I like that.
Not if they're booking eight or nine months in advance.
The summer comes around or the fall comes around, they need to book somebody six months in advance. They're going to come to us and go, what are y'all going to do about next year? Are y'all going to extend it another year? That's what they're going to say. And everyone's going to go, well, I don't know. Wait till January. Can't do that to them.
No, I think they can come back at the beginning of the year of every year like they did this year. It's worked out fine. Everybody's happy, right?
It might do be nice as far as for staffing purposes for the police to know, I mean, if they're doing it for the year. Public works for them to know if they're doing it for the year, because, I mean, it does require extra PD. It does require for us to pull, I mean, put out and pull no parking sides and barricades.
So does the February to November not work for them every year?
Oh, no. Yeah, I mean.
Can they not come back in January and say, hey, we want it again for February and November?
Either way, it works.
Yeah, either way.
But we're not going to do that for Delamar.
That's up to y'all. I think the difference between Fairhope Avenue and Delamar is that Fairhope Avenue is organizing themselves for. Everybody's paying into the van, whereas Delamar does not do that.